Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to our annual meeting and call this meeting to order. And we do have a quorum. Our first order of business is the minutes from the last annual meeting, which was July 8th, 2024. So hopefully, everybody has had a chance to read those. See if there's any discussion or edits. If not, I'll take a motion.
We approve the minutes from the last annual meeting of July 8th, 2024.
Second?
Second.
It was Celeste. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Shay.
I'm confused with the bless you.
I tried some artists, but I didn't.
Scott and Kate are abstaining. Anybody else good? Okay. Motion's passed. So now I'd like to turn it over to Celeste for Committee on Trustees.
Okay, we have two members who are up for renewal. We have Michelle Laeger coming in for her second term, and we have Lisa Cobb coming in for her third. So the committee would like to motion that we accept them for their second and third terms, respectively.
Motion. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Welcome back.
I can't oppose, right?
You cannot.
I'll see you next time.
That's right.
Okay, with the departure of General Hobgood and Daniel Pond during the year, we have two openings on our board, and we would like to present Jean Kilby and Karen Battle for serving on the committee or on the Board of Trustees for the next three years.
Hey. That is our motion. We need a motion for that, or that is your motion?
That is the committee's motion.
That's the committee's motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Welcome aboard.
Then we have the slate of officers for 25, 26. So we have Melody Kotek has agreed to stay on for a third year as president, which is a little bit abnormal, but these are not normal times. So we thank you for being willing to do that. We recommend making Scott Jenkins for Vice President, Michelle Laeger for Treasurer, Natalie Picken for Secretary, and Whitlow for at-large. A slate of officers presented for.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstate? Okay. We are off and running. Are you squared away for that? For your so?
So.
Okay. All right. Then at this point, we're going to adjourn the annual meeting and start up with the bi-monthly meeting. And at this point, I'd like to invite Jean and Karen to come on up and join the table. You're official. Any?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could sit on the table.
Sit on the table. Part of the team now. Right here at my phone.
That's right.
It's just mildly more for the moment. We will get to some other things for you. We have some other things for you about email addresses and things like that. We'll get to that later on in the agenda. Okay, so this, we are now called to order for our bi-monthly meeting, and we do have a quorum. First order of business is the minutes, approval of the minutes from the May 12th Board of Trustees meeting. Just two short months ago. Any discussion or edits for that set of minutes? Did you get the pass? I'm sorry, did you get the package ahead of time?
I gave her a packet.
Okay. You have the packet there, Jean?
Yes.
Go ahead.
A motion that the minutes is presented for the May 12th meeting to be accepted.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? You're welcome to abstain since you weren't here, if you'd like to.
I'm ready.
Ready. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Good. So that brings us to the minutes, approval of the minutes from our special meeting that we held on June 23rd, 2020. If there are any edits or corrections, discussion to that set of minutes.
Move that we approve the special board meeting minutes of June 23rd, 2025.
Is that true? Did you get the second?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Go. And Kate?
I wasn't hearing it.
Very good. We have one citizen. Is there anything you would like to say? No pressure. No pressure.
Turn the light out.
What was it?
I'll get the light out.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. Moving along. I do have something that I'd like to say for all of us here and for the public. July meetings offer us a unique opportunity to reflect on the year we've left behind, a year full of multiple awards that, if you haven't checked it out, are in the hall on the way in. Exciting programs and some truly outstanding statistics for the previous year. It offers us an opportunity to look ahead with excitement as we welcome our new board members and begin imagining all that we can accomplish together in the year to come. Certainly, our first goal as a board this year is to return to the negotiating table with the Warren County Board of Supervisors and restore our public-private partnership. Only then can we close this troubling chapter and begin writing a new one for the library. Let's take a moment to talk about what it means to negotiate. According to Merriam-Webster Dictionary, it means to arrange for or bring about through conference, discussion, and compromise. The image most of us have of a good-faith negotiation is one where both parties come to the table as partners, open to hearing each other's ideas and concerns, and committed to working toward a shared agreement. Samuel's Library staff and board members have participated in this kind of process before, and I'm confident we can do it again. But key to any negotiation is that it must begin in good faith. Predetermined conditions, like those suggested by Supervisor Jamison, do not meet that standard by any reasonable definition. That is not negotiation, it's an ultimatum. This library belongs to the people of Warren County. Since 1799, Samuel's Public Library has been and continues to be in partnership with this community. Warren County residents have served on its boards, staffed the library, raised funds, and volunteered to make it the exceptional and award-winning institution it is today. And even now, it is the people of Warren County who are determining this library's future. They are speaking out, writing letters, making donations, and casting their ballots. It's imperative that the county supervisors listen to the will of the people. Thank you for allowing me that few minutes there. Moving on. Let's move on to Erin and our library director's report.
All right. So you, of course, have the director's report in your packet, and again, there is tons of stuff going on because there's always something going on at the library. For general updates, some highlights, we did several outreach events through May and June, the main ones being Juneteenth and Main Street Geek. We went to the Free Comic Book Day. Each of those events, we met with over 250 people and were able to showcase what we had going on at the library. Rotary Club of Warren County did a peace poll that is now in our children's garden. We had a dedication ceremony, which we had about 40 people. It was a wonderful event. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, I recommend, of course, when it is not raining. Some other really great things, well, this happened in July, but I decided to put it in anyway. Of course, some of you were at our open house. It was a major success. It was on July 1st. We had over 1,200 people walk through our door. That was our door count. We had 70 new cards and renewals. It was about 24 new cards and about 40 or so renewals, as well as showcasing our tiny art exhibit, which is now the fourth annual, I believe, and is the most participated event we've had, with 234 pieces of tiny art in the exhibit. It is, it first started out in our new books, our recently added books display across from the circulation desk. It is now branched off into the main part of the adult reference department, just because of how much we have in arts to display. So I highly recommend checking that out if you haven't already. At the open house, we had over $2,000 made in donations, as well as Fossil, who had their table of merchandise that made over about $1,700. And thank you so much for our sponsors, Mountain Home Bed and Breakfast and Apple House that provided the donuts. For the facility, we had a couple of maintenance things that we had to do. One of them was restriping the parking lot because it was in dire, very dire need of it. We did that in about mid-May, so you'll see it is new, got some new fresh paint on there. You can actually see where your car is now. And then we also did have to do some more repairs on the membrane portion of the roof, which we seem to be holding up okay. We've been checking every time we have any major rainfall. Cheryl's been fantastic on that. For usage and services, some of the big ones I'd like to showcase, our traffic count is again up 9% from FY '24 in May. June stats were not available at the time when we made this report. Programming attendance is way up by 55%, which is fantastic from FY '24 in May. And volunteer hours continue to decline exponentially at 72% from FY '24 in May. We have absolutely amazing volunteers there in here for hours on end, doing absolutely amazing work. Databases is up 7% as of FY '24. As you've seen past reports, they have been a steady incline, some changes on what's been more prevalently used per month. I actually want to give a shout out to Fossil because I think some of the outreach you guys have done showcasing some of our database actually increased our brainfuse databases for Help Now and Vet Now, which are two databases, one to help kids with homework help and the other for connecting veterans to other reference services. And then, of course, tons and tons of programs going on. Our main one, Summer Reading, we've already hit the numbers from last year. So at the beginning of June, till when I made this report, there was about 300 attendees for the opening days event, which was a performance by Bright Star Theater. The kid side did an Alice in Wonderland carnival kickoff, which was very well done. As far as people registered for the program, we had about 183 adults so far, and of course, that now has increased again. 693 children and teens, which is about 12,776 books read and 248,498 minutes read. That's about 24 years' worth of reading.
Wow.
And the books, so for the adults, we've changed it up. Again, we did the kind of the same thing from last year. They are now just specifically doing time read instead of logging books. The kid side's kind of doing both at the moment. Some other programs, the, we do a reptile program every year for the kids. It is always the most popular event. We have almost 400 people for that event. We may have to do that two events next year, just because it's more than this room can really hold. So we're hoping to get them back again because it was excellent. They had one of those giant pythons the kids got to wrap around their neck.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
On my part, I stepped in, and the ladies know, 400 kids. Now you need to be quiet before I take this guy out. And they're all like, woo! I was like, oh, my God, somebody's gonna get me.
Like, poor snake. And of course, a couple other things.
We had an amazing Indigenous American program called Walking in Two Paths that was well-attended, about 50 attendees. The Tampa Taiko and Colorful Dragon Show, which had about 70 attendees, and as well as a partnership with the Front Row's Anti-Litter Council to do another story walk in East of Park. And then, for the adult reference side, we have a new partner with Virginia Works, who is now conducting regular job fairs at the library, so you should see that every other month or so. And we had about 35 attendees for the first one, which was really, really good, as well as a new line dancing program that is slowly increasing in people attending. I've heard some good things. It's apparently very fun. I need to try my hand at it. And they're doing that, I think, almost bi-weekly. So if you can't make it one week, try to come to the next one. And then we also did a partnership with Warren County Fire and Rescue to do a Stop the Bleed training, which is fantastic. I'm hoping to get them back again. So if you missed it last time, please check that one out. It's in case, if you're ever in a situation where somebody has, you know, there's an accident and you want to be able to help an individual, they teach you best practices on how to render aid to someone. And then also, new program with Master Gardeners is now doing Walkabout Wednesdays. So if you ever need help with houseplants or anything of that nature, or any plants in general, you can walk in on Wednesdays and the Master Gardeners will help you out.
Can we bring our plant with us?
I would say why not?
Yeah.
That's be cool.
Coming.
Joey loves to challenge.
So, yeah. Of course, we've got pictures in the report from some of the programs. If anybody's got questions, I'm here to answer.
Yeah. Erin, can you talk a little bit? The one, one thing from this year is down with circulation. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes.
What we're going to improve upon that?
So one of the, one of the stats we had down is circulation, about down 1% at the moment. We have been having issues, and this is industry-wide, not just with us, with the library book What I have been told is it's issues between the vendor and the publishers with their contracts and licensing. So they're hoping to, the one particular vendor says they're hoping to have stuff wrapped up within the next month, but it has been issues with our stuff getting backordered and not getting to us in a timely manner. So we have had to switch over to other vendors, using Amazon, for instance, as a backup. Real quick, we do not like doing that. I have been told they're branching out as well, so they're improving their services for libraries, so being able to use them now as a regular book vendor, great discounts in order to get books in at a more timely.
Quick delivery.
Yeah, and quick delivery. But the, most of the issue is the backorders, trying to get the vendor getting the books and then sending it to us. It was a, it's been a whole issue.
Is it a cross-the-board downturn in circulation, or is it more, more adult reading or children's book?
Pretty much across the board in different areas, although we have had a little bit of an uptick in the ebooks, of course.
And I have a quick question. What's 1% like? What's the number?
I don't have that off the hand, but I can, I can send that to you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't know the number offhand, but I.
I think we're circling. I'd round.
So, yeah.
It's not, not a worry moment?
No.
No.
We're hoping skin up to get.
Boss itself, or Amazon, they're trying to step into the void really fast, and they're offering discounts that exceed our current vendors. So they just have to get a few more things tightened up because you need to get the mark records and all this stuff. But they're gonna, you know how they work. They're gonna step into that void, man.
You're out front already.
And we're ready. We'll take them.
They're pretty much in a beta phase right now, but for, for having an alternative with the issues the other vendors have, it's been a, it's been a boon.
Is this, is this looking like they were possibly a replacement now?
It may be how it goes, yeah. There's still some downsides to their platform because they don't really offer anything as far as like, one of the things the other library vendors are great at is, because we try and order months in advance so that we get stuff at its street date, but they don't really offer a way to really organize all that together that's really available for selectors.
Right.
So, you know, oh, I need to see all the items that are coming out in September, for instance, and right now it's July. There's not a real easy way to organize that for them, so.
But you never know, they may.
But they might get that way.
People spinning.
Yeah. But right now, it's mostly if we notice immediately that something is backordered and we can't, we're not going to get it in time, we'll switch over to Amazon to see if we get a better.
He's gotta pay for his multi-billion dollar wedding.
Right. I mean, it just sounds like a supply chain.
Yeah.
Type deal.
And there's so few suppliers.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Especially for discounts, because one of the reasons why we wouldn't necessarily buy from Amazon all that much is because a lot of the books wouldn't have a discount. So for an item that's usually $27 hardback on Amazon, we would get from our other vendors for 17. So that's a $10 difference.
That's a big difference.
But now their discounts are starting to creep up to that, so.
Look, if we can make some money, you're going to.
Yeah, love.
Right? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sidetrack.
It's okay.
Any other questions for Erin? Okay. Good. All right. Let's move over to Michelle.
On the finance front, we had a committee meeting on June 11th. We also had one on Wednesday, but that'll be for the next, okay. Okay, so we just, we noted, it began with, we noted that on the, I don't know if anybody's gone out to look at the Warren County Board of Supervisors budget and documents, but they have completely erased the name of Samuel's Library. Anywhere, even in the history, it now shows Warren County Library Board for 20, the years 2022 and 2023. Just FYI. I don't, you know, I don't think it impacts us any, but just be aware that we are no longer listed, even historically, as somebody who received funding.
And they took our name out.
They took our name, they took our name out. So it's very odd.
We've been erased.
We've been erased.
Have been challenged.
Yeah.
Curious to see what the auditor, what their auditor thinks of.
It was Warren County Library Board in '22, '23, and weird, and now it lists.
Didn't exist.
I mean, it didn't exist.
Didn't even exist.
Didn't exist, but it's showing that they got the money that we got in fiscal year '23, '24, '25. They didn't even exist until.
It's old.
'25. Yeah, '24, '25. You can't, they've taken out Samuel's Library. Odd. Anyway, we do, on another note, we did, we had a discussion to modify the investment policy to include the donor emergency fund, because that had not been up yet. So that's underway. And then we also had a, Scott brought up the concern about the month-to-month funding. We are now on month-to-month funding. There is no, obviously, there's no public, there's no county money. We got, so we, as a, as the, as a finance committee, we agreed that we are going to meet monthly to go over the expenses that are going out the door. Do I need to make a motion to, did we already do that? Erin, we gave Erin a limit. We increased her limit as to what she can, that was a special meeting. Sorry. So everybody was there. Yeah, so we increased Erin's limit so she could access the funds. That was approved through the special meeting. So as, as the, in the committee, we're just going to meet every month to go over what's going out the door and what, you know. So hopefully, I think this month actually turned out really good. I saw $60,000 withdrawal, and we were thinking we'd be closer to 86. So anything we don't withdraw, carries forward, gets us more money with that 4% interest rate. Any questions on that? And anybody's welcome to attend those meetings. It's the second Wednesday of every month.
Right. At 5:30.
At 5:30. Okay.
And that's good news about state aid.
Yeah, I got my certification. It'll hit the bank tomorrow.
Awesome. Awesome.
That's affordably, that's 61 and change.
Very good. That's good, because right now, our operating account's at $70,703. Our reserve account is down to $38,339. So those are our quick accounts, so to speak. The melon account, we're at $99,743, and the melon CD is at $143,429. Again, those two are strictly reserved for the melon, the melon fund. So on the other accounts, we are at $1,064 for our endowment account, and we are at, let's see, what's the, what's the 65? That's the.
That's the.
Hubert, the Hubert Endowment. And the other news, I don't think this, is this represented in these numbers?
No.
Okay. The, the emergency fund is up to $603,475. So that's 603,475.
But we put in the request to transfer.
60. 60, 60, yeah.
So that'll come out with that.
Okay. So that's minus 60. We've put a chart together, whatever, how we, how fast, you know, how it's going to look going down. So the more money the development, you know, we bring in, it's an easy calculation and we can tell, you know, where we are. As of right now, if everything stays as we budgeted, which I think we have budgeted conservatively, which means, which means I don't think we're going to have to withdraw as much as we think. So it's a conservative budget and a 4% interest rate with no new money coming in, it'll last us until January. I believe that's what, January or February?
Yeah.
So that's the good news. The other good news, exciting, oh, sorry, and these account, the other accounts, the community foundation accounts, which we have two, one's at $7,203, the other one's at But the other exciting news that Melody just handed me is that it was a blogger, right? Or it was a, it was a.
It's kind of like a, it's an online, yeah, it's an online magazine.
Yeah, the online magazine, through this online magazine, we have raised since July 8th, $10,593 in funding.
Nice.
Donations.
Very nice.
That's very nice.
So that, that's a national, that has a national reach, and we picked up like 10 or 12 states and.
Ireland, apparently.
And Ireland. Yeah. Money from Ireland.
That was July 8th.
July, this last Wednesday. So when this was, that article hit.
Yeah.
And that he was using language from, that was given to him from one of the press releases from, with our marketing people. And when it hit at noonish, then all of a sudden, 3:30, 4 o'clock, we started getting ding, 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 like every three minutes, there was money coming in, everything, $5, $10, $20.
This coming.
We were like, Amy's like, what's happening?
It's not $10,000. We're $10,000 now.
Yeah, and now, since Wednesday of last, of last week, it's not even a week, and $10,000 has come in.
Nice.
So it's just mind-boggling of how quickly something like that can happen and.
Yeah.
Response. So people out there are being very supportive of our community and our library and the cause, and it's just overwhelming in some ways. States that you wouldn't expect, you know, it's, it's starting out west and New England, like it's everywhere. It's just everywhere. So it's exciting. So if we can keep that going, then we won't run out of money.
So that's right. That's right.
So there you go. Just keep that going.
Yeah. And I know I personally did Sydney's request and donated $19.84.
Sure.
On behalf of Rich Dickinson.
And I have a birthday coming up, August 1st. It opened up on my Facebook account fundraiser.
Yeah.
Up to $140, so.
Awesome. Peer-to-peer thing. Yeah.
Whitlow hasn't contributed yet.
And then what you'll, what else is attached is the budget. I don't know if there's.
I don't know if we need to vote on it. We need to vote on it.
I think we do.
Okay.
I revisited the proposed budget.
Okay. So, you look at the budget.
You want the extra handout that we did, not the one that's actually in the packet? Because this one has the updated.
Assumes no, look at the, assumes no funding from Warren County, right?
Yeah, you're looking for.
Comes in late.
I redid it from top to bottom and looked at actuals now that it, because I had the ability to look at more close to the end of year actuals, as opposed to putting these together the October before the end of the year, like we normally do. So, I've tried to make it as close to real as I can.
So, are we approving the 1, the 1532, or is it now?
Yeah, you're approving the 1532. The error is in, if you look on the top block of income, it says 1.201.
Yeah.
If you have the second page at the very bottom that says 1.199, that's wrong. That should be 1.201.
Okay. Under library.
It adds up to 1.201, I've.
Okay.
Popped in, and all the other arrangements, I guess.
And so, just a quick note, if you look at the, we're going to ask for approval of the 1.5, and I think in the finance committee, and I think we talked about it here too, you know, we do see an increase of 1.4 to 1.5, the budget. But what you're seeing here in the 2025 is budget and not actual spend. So, that's just what we budgeted for last year. I think we came a little over that, so we.
We did. This is a little less.
This is less than actual.
Right.
Right. And it includes, and we are giving, we are not withholding pay increases or anything like that. We're going to push, we, this budget's for pay increases. So.
So, if I'm, the budget of fiscal year 2025, the 1.43.
30, yeah.
The increase to fiscal year 2026 is primarily cost of living.
Yep.
Salaries, cost of living.
And maintenance.
And maintenance.
And maintenance, because we have to be taking out our payroll.
Yes, yeah.
If I recall correctly, the actuals for fiscal year 25 were a little bit higher than budgeting for fiscal 26.
Yes.
So, we're actually.
Yeah, well, on maintenance alone, the board authorized $47,000 early on before we knew they were going to be rug out from under us to do the carpet and the floors and the bathrooms. And then, just running some quick numbers today on the 2025 actuals, not on our contractual maintenance agreement, but on bringing carrier in for service calls to fix problems, we spent almost $18,000 last year.
So, if you look at this page, if you look at this page, everything works.
Yeah, this, that's your actual.
If you look at this page and you go to where it says total and look for July 24 through June 25, you'll see that our total expenses were 1.548. Is that? Isn't that?
Yeah.
You see the 1, yeah, in the package, yeah, at the bottom of three, page 33.
Okay.
And it says, and it's, and this, and it's this column right here. I can show it. Like, and it says total at the top, total, and then if you look at, so our fiscal year goes from July 1st to June 30th.
Okay.
And the actual we spent last year was 1.548.
Um.
We're on page 3 of 3, yeah, 1.548.
I see.
On a budget of 1.43, so really, we're going from 1.548 down to 1.532. So, we're reducing our budget by $16,000. And that, and so we are cutting expenses, if you think about it, if we're passing through cost of living, we're passing through maintenance, and we're still cutting budget. So, we are.
Yeah.
We are making as many cuts as we can.
And, and this is credit to Eileen, who went over every line item and tried to cut down.
Yes.
Where she possibly could. And then.
She'll be watching it like a hawk.
Yes. And then, in the, in the, in the building maintenance was, prior to this, was still a cleaning company, and we now have staff. So.
That cost.
That cost has changed. So, they're out of the budget under maintenance, but now we have two staff people.
And one of the staff people is capable of doing some sort of level of maintenance for us, so it's working out well.
Yeah. Yeah, that maintenance was 70, is that the 72, 328?
Yeah.
We had 72, 328 there, and then what's it budgeted for this? 68, so there's, you know, there's $3,000 cut there, okay.
Well, I think it'll come in less and less.
I think you need to be careful, because.
Well, you want to budget.
I want to budget.
Yeah.
To make sure we don't get caught short.
Right. So, it's conservative, and yet there's still savings in here.
Yes.
So, but this is, this, we had already voted on a budget for fiscal year 26, so this is a new budget for going into the fiscal year 26 with no funding from Warren County.
Right.
So, we will need to vote on this going forward. And I think for this one, let's go ahead and do an up and down, Cheryl. Vote on this. Does anybody have any other questions? I don't want to cut short time on the budget, like if you have other questions, please take a moment, and that's okay.
I've, I've been in the finance meetings. So, the items that we are, that we have whittled down, dropped.
Right.
We have, if those line items are, or is it just so that I don't need to see those numbers? That's not why I'm asking.
Yeah.
We are going to be self-funded, and this is the direct rate, so, and everything that we do is basic. Do we show or do we annotate some places where we're making adjustments?
We're budgeting. Compares to the prior year's budget, so you can see those things side by side. At the July 8th meeting, the finance committee asked me to give them a document that removed the three historical budget columns and put in the FY '25 actuals.
So, on this one, it'll be more, it'll be actuals to budget.
The only meeting I didn't go to.
Exactly. So, we got out on top.
There you go.
Sorry, I'm kidding.
I've been yelling a number of times, but I just wanted to, okay.
We missed you terribly. Yeah.
I mean, just to, to understanding, because of the situation we are in, and that we are under a microscope.
Yes, right, absolutely.
They can.
Things have been pushed off and, and cut down, and, and here we are with, this is close to reality with some belt tightening, and I think that.
And just think about. The approach that there are certain things we need to replace technologically right now. One of them is our server that functions as our backup. For a variety of areas. That's got to be replaced now.
Core system.
Yes.
You know, there's a, a large battery backup and, you know, so a few things like that, and a couple laptops. And then the rest of it, I pushed until the second half of the year, hoping that the climate will be different. But we'll see. And there are certain things we can just cut out if we have to.
Right.
It just puts us that much further behind. But if we have to do it, that's what we'll do.
Year to fall.
Yeah, totally. That may be where we find ourselves.
And I, I believe the Board of Supervisors, I think library services are still allocated on their budget.
At the moment, yes.
At the moment, they still.
What happens tomorrow. Yes, of today.
That's, so that's still hope.
So, what I, what, when you look at the code, the Virginia codes, they cannot change that allocation since it's been voted on without bringing it back to the public.
So. Oh, is that going to be a public hearing or a public?
I believe so. So, when you look at, at.
Because it exceeds 1% of it.
Yeah, it's under chapter 25, 15.2, under, under the Virginia code. So, for them to change an allocation that's already been voted on.
Yeah.
You're going to have to bring it back in front of the public.
Interesting.
Well, we'll find out what happens tomorrow, and, and in the, you know, the rest of the, the, the next year.
Melody's going to begin her legal practice on the Code of Virginia, August 1st.
Because I just looked it up today. Don't ask me tomorrow.
Melody, one thing to point out in, in this FY '26 budget, the library funds total on the page 1, 1 million income.
Income, 1.
1.2 million. You just have to flip the page to, just recognize that some of that money is coming from normal sources. 3% off the endowment fund.
Yeah.
And reserve fund transfers. But the bulk of that, 1.163 million, that's going to come from a variety of sources. It's going to come from the donor emergency fund, going to come from additional fundraising activities.
That's right.
And so, that's a big numbers. Everybody should recognize that we've, we've got a lot of work to do this year to generate that income and gather these donations. We're going to have to stay on that busy, because our, as you'll see in the development plan that's being presented tonight, that's really just a standard development plan. It doesn't take into account the extraordinary circumstances that we're in.
That's okay.
So, we've got to, I guess, want people to realize that.
Yes.
Budgeting that very aggressively.
That's definitely.
And to point out, and, and that would probably be a good time to point everybody to the library's homepage. We've put up a thermometer that has the, reflects these numbers on that page. So, there's a thermometer that shows what do we need to get through here, where we are at the moment, and where that funding is coming from. So, there's, of course, a zero next to Warren County coming from, but then it, it says library funding and donations. And then miscellaneous income is actually fees and fines, so we didn't include that. But it shows on the thermometer where, where we're going to be. So, that'll be up for the, for the year. Where are we? How much more do we need? And in order to get through the year, until we can hopefully get this negotiated and back to the, back to the normal situation.
The good news is we already have enough funds to run through January, February.
Yes.
But here's another six months after that, then we've got to cover.
That's right.
Yeah. And we did get the state funding, so that we're, we're squared away there. And then E-Rate, then we, we have.
We've already gotten $3,300 from E-Rate, and then we'll be doing a project that begins within the next week or so on upgrading the Wi-Fi. And E-Rate will pay $7,000 on that against a $9,000 cost, so.
Thanks. Is the full cost in the budget?
Full cost is in the budget, and so it's.
The offset is not perfect, okay, so that's.
And that'll be on, and we'll catch that on our monthly meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, E-Rate, you have to get the whole project complete. I turn over all the invoices to the guy who puts it all together in all those federal forms, and then he submits it. And once it's submitted, it's pretty quick to get your money, so.
And for Karen and Jean, you'll see the color coding on the budget versus actual. The, the blue is where we were getting county funding before, and the brown or the tan is all of the state funding categories. So, at our, when we do have our retreat, we'll go over the state funding and how key that is and how many areas that covers. It's almost like we have to plug all that in first and then go back and figure out that we couldn't. We'll go over that when we, when we do our, when we dive a little deeper. Any other questions on the budget?
The motion.
Okay. You need a motion to accept the new budget?
A motion that we approved and budget for FY 2026, so $1,532,380.
Second.
And a second? And then I'd like a roll call vote for this one. Sotek? Yes. With absent, Emerson's absent, Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Brooks?
Yes.
Sigman?
Yes.
Ms. Lejer?
Yes.
Saddle?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Whitlow?
Yes.
Ms. Trosh?
Yes.
Mr. Kelby?
Yes.
Got everybody? Okay. Thank you for that. All right, we have a budget going forward. Good? And the actual budget to actuals there for your, for your reading pleasure. When you just have to have something to put you to sleep. Okay.
Your pardon.
You can, is that this?
Yeah.
This is exciting.
Sorry, I asked for. Over there. Yeah, just numbers people. All right. Moving on, that brings us to Mr. Whitlow and the Development Committee report.
Real simple, just like Mr. Jenkins mentioned, to have a rather larger stability, and the Development Committee has been taking that very seriously. We've been working with Finance Committee as well. So, we are, we are laying the groundwork for this work, going through the fantastic list that I was given. We met with, our last meeting, we met with Sarah Miller and Josh Sims, they're from Meadow philanthropy. They're one of the organizations that are helping us in this situation of trying to raise money, what we do, public relations, all that types of stuff. So, there's an emergency donor fund that's there, and we're looking at how that's being managed and how that's going to tie into what we do within the Development Committee. Donations, of course, as Melody was saying, donations for the donor emergency fund are ongoing. That is being managed, and we have monthly meetings now with the Finance Committee so that we know where that money is going, where it's coming from, and how we're going to apply it. What I also want to bring up, Amy, Amy provided, or she launched a new Substack, and new Substack is, I'm, I'm going to put that to folks that don't know digital media, it's sort of like a Facebook, okay? And what we will ask is, I'm not trying to minimize it, but what we would ask is that if you're not on our Substack, that you join us, please, and that you share that with everyone that you know, because it's our responsibility to make sure that this information is disseminated and that people in our, in our groups, our people are aware of what we're doing. We look here, we've got that, donations, the business sponsorship packet. This was a project that Mr. Jenkins was taking care of, and you, people have got a copy of that in the business sponsor, in our, in our packet here. Scott was tasked with starting a business sponsorship program, which we didn't have. And what he has done, he's worked with Amy, and you can, you can look through, I'm not going to go through this, but there's a number of things that are in this packet, and we will be looking at people to help us get out and talk to our neighbors and say, hey, we want these types of things, you want to join the fight, be part of something, I'll break its brain, but it's going to be the responsibility of us, be hitting the streets and knocking on doors and saying, hey, we really would like people to be involved in this, it's a great program, and it's helping a, an asset in the community that is, well, very.
If I can, it's really not just a fundraising money exercise, it's building relationships with our business partners throughout the community. So, it's strengthening our ties with the community, looking for creative ways that small businesses and larger businesses can be part of the library, either through programming, through, through funds donation, through sponsoring different events, really tailored towards what each business is looking for out of that relationship with, with library, and what the library can benefit from that relationship. And Erin and I met last week to, to go through and come up with our, in short-term targets and who we want to talk to. And my goal, my thoughts are that if we talk to five businesses a month, and we can get three businesses a month to sign on as sponsors, then over the course of the year, that's 36, we could sign on as sponsors. And I could see that very easily, generating an income stream of $100,000 a year and sustaining that very easily generating an income stream of $100,000 a year and sustaining sponsors. I think that's a very achievable goal, but it means we've all got to focus on it. And so kind of be thinking about which businesses would be interested, would be receptive, and would be compatible, that they would benefit from that as much as we would. Because it's a win win type of arrangement. It's not just soliciting funds.
If anybody has business people that you know, you need to share those with we'll start sharing with Whitlow and he'll share them with the Development Committee. And where do we go, you know, from there? Who do you know? Kind of thing.
So do we have you'll keep a we tell you so no so we're two of us aren't hitting the same business.
Right. Well, it'll be basically, once it's finalized, and we figured out what we've come up with and how we're going to approach it, we'll we will at that point set something up so that we're all on the same page.
Anything else, Mr. Jenkins?
Going down the list, we've got development plan. We presented a board pat. I'm sorry, the development plan was presented to the Development Committee. We discussed the number of items concerning that. We are going to approve a plan as it is here. And when we go to our next meeting, we're going to sit down and we've got a number of things that we've already been working on. And we're going to keep chipping away at some things. So you will see where you will see mentions, or there'll be annotations on a on as an ongoing thing, since it's sort of a living document. I hope and I'm not going to get into any of that. And then that's all I've got. But I do want to I do want to mention another person. I want to mention Sydney, the new president of the Friends of the Samuels Library. Collaborating on an event, the Christmas in July, which I'm gonna let her get into more of that. But what we did was, we took a very small local event with 16 vendors, and Sydney turned it into an event where there was 40 vendors. So we quadrupled it, tripled it. And we're still waiting for the numbers on that. But all of those funds were being donated to Fossil. So I want to give her a big kudos. She could not have done it without her because we're all very busy. She took care of a lot of the logistics of this of this task. And she knocked it out of the park. So and with that, if there's any if there's not anything else that anybody wants to discuss Development Committee, I'm going to pass the line to Fossil.
I think you need.
You need to on the development plan?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So.
So I'm so new at this, as you can see here.
That's okay. That's all right. So so the board got the development plan at our last meeting and had a chance to look it over. So now we're at the point where we're going to go ahead and adopt this plan for the coming year. So we need a motion and a vote. So I take it that you're putting forward the motion as the Development Committee?
The Development Plan as.
As presented. So I'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you, Kate. And all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. This will be our development plan going forward. And of course, the Development Committee will be working and adjusting it in the coming year.
Thank you.
Okay, that we will move on to the Strategic Planning Committee. And Joan?
Strategic Plan Committee did not meet last month. But the strategic plan was circulated amongst the board members. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to look at it. And looking for and approval of that strategic plan. Good. Let's be caveat that it's not a stay strategy. Our committee is back next month, carving it up. And then while we change it. So but this gives us a document to work on for the next year. So on, does anybody have any comments on the plan? Unless it's presented in your packet?
Those reflexes, a year's worth of work and word sniffing and changing things. Looks good. I think we're at a pretty good place.
What's what's.
Gashipas.
It's really important. And Mel, do you echo that in your Oakland comments, is that we still very strongly value public partnership, public private partnership.
Absolutely.
Even though the county has not provided funding, we're still committed to that model. And that's our goal. And that's part of our long term vision. It's reflected in the strategic plan. And that's what really came out to me. Is we haven't deviated, even though the county is not working with us right now. Long term, that's still the direction we want to be.
That's our goal is to get back there. And I have faith that we will eventually, that we need to function and manage while we work on that. But yes, that's part of the strategic plan. To have keep that public private partnership going. Okay, so you're putting forth the motion, the motion, teaching plan, as reasoned, and this pack be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Cheryl seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. This is our strategic plan going forward for the next fiscal year. Thank you, Joan and your committee for all the work. Kim is not here. Do you want to comment on Policy Committee on where we are with that?
Sure. So we met on Monday, June 9. We only had one thing, all right, 5:30, we only had one thing on the agenda, which was the Studio 330 disclaimer. This is an extra document we wanted to have as best practice. It's not quite ready yet. So we had additional discussions and have another second draft that is going to be at the next meeting. And it was adjourned at 6:24. We have not had a date set yet for the next policy meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And I skip right over. The last back over to you for Committee on Trustees.
Crossed off one too many.
We did not have a meeting this past month. However, in your packet, you do have the term lists. So you can see how much longer you have until you're up for renewal. This year could potentially be busy. And Madeline and I are both on our final year. We also have Lori, Lewis, Ed, and Whitlow all coming up for renewal next time. So we have a minimum of two people turning over. We could potentially have another five.
Hopefully not.
Not allowed.
Big class.
Yeah. In the meantime, on the back, you also have the purpose committee list. We tried to even things out. And we had a couple of gentlemen, Scott and Whitlow, who's tended to be everywhere and on everything. And we tried to scale that back in respect for personal lives. However, if we've accidentally taken you off for something you would prefer to stay on, please let me know. Ask me to fit you back on anything you would like to stay on. And if there's anything that anybody wants to serve on, if you are wanting to switch things around, then please go ahead and let me know. And just to say here, any of the committees, you're welcome to go to any committee meeting at any time, even if you're not on the official roster, you're 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 welcome to go and sit in.
And every committee meeting is open to the public.
Yeah. I must say, and I would recommend.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice when the development comes to find, you know.
And I'm going to start looking at strategic as well, because what we've got going on, it would be it will it will us to communicate.
Yeah, there's a lot of crossover.
All right.
Melody?
Yeah.
Ms. Battle and Mr. Kilby, Jessica Sayers will be in touch with you in the next couple of days via your personal emails.
Here.
You.
What do you have?
They have their.
Yeah, these are the instructions.
Oh, great.
So you're you have a Samuels email?
I have a Samuels email.
Hey.
And instructions how to get there.
Thank you.
Thanks to Jessica.
Whatever you do.
Can be FOIA.
Can be FOIA. So you might not want to do things on your personal email because then it opens up your personal email to be FOIA. So if you use the Samuels email, you're, you know, that's easy.
And that's where you will find communications from us. It'll everything's going through Samuels.
We're nonprofit, yes, because we get public funds, we are affordable. And that's why sometimes like with the the board email I sent out, I'll I'm putting do not reply all because if you reply all, then it's considered public meeting. And then that's on the record. So.
Good question. Is there a single place where we can look and see all the upcoming committee meeting dates? Is there like a combined calendar?
So on our library calendar, I'm more than happy to sit down with you guys. Yes, we we try and get out as far advanced as we can. We're trying to set it so that's we're having committee meetings. So the set dates like finance every second Wednesday or so, but they should be all on there. We're trying to be good about they're color coded as library programs or committee meetings or library meetings.
And if you have any. Out of 10, it's at the bottom of the minutes for the next meeting.
If any questions, don't hesitate.
Oh, and on our website for the webpage for Board Trustees, the main bi-monthlies are always listed in advance.
The only other thing is that we do normally have our annual retreat in August. We're struggling to find an August date that works. So we are looking at September 6 instead. That is two days before a board meeting. So I am I'm sorry about that. But we do need a solid three to four hours of, you know, three hours of meeting time and an hour to just socialize and get to know each other. And so that's the only Saturday that we seem to be able to make work. So you can mark your calendars for that. And let me know if you can attend, please, so that we can have an idea of how many can attend.
When we quit Saturday with.
September 6.
September 6.
What time do you usually meet? And is it here? It is usually here. And we normally do about nine to one. So.
We provide lunch.
Yeah.
And some breakfast treats.
We eat well.
I don't tie shooters somehow.
If you're coming in extra, at least it was a good.
We feed you.
Some good food. But it's a good chance for us to go over. There's a short orientation. It's a good refresher for the rest of the board. And then all these kinds of questions about FOIA. And usually, we try to have a speaker. We there's some since it's an unusual year and we're fundraising, we had talked about trying to bring in our.
Palmetto.
Yes, Sarah from Palmetto. And it's like her, let her work with us and do a little bit of, you know, how do you ask, you know, or if you don't want to be involved in that, at least you can observe how that goes. And, you know, that kind of thing. So we'll try to have a speaker and and just a chance to do some informal kind of without this setting, get to know each other and and that kind of thing. So it's unusual that it's back to back with a board meeting, but it just is kind of working out that way this year. So we'll do September 6. And then that following Monday is a board meeting. But if we've all done our homework, they can we can get through that pretty quickly. So.
Is there a time for that meeting yet? What time?
The retreat?
Six?
No, retreats in the morning. So yeah, 9:30, 10, depending when we library opens at 10. But we can, of course, let you in.
Get in early.
So we try to work on that. And then we also do a at the retreat, we'll do a conflict of interest form to sign. If you think about if you have any, it's a standard form. If you are involved in a business, you know, if there's something out there that, you know, people should be aware of. I think that's pretty well it, right?
Mm hmm.
Or are you good? Is that hit everything you wanted to get?
Our meeting dates, because I will get most of my committee's numbers to find out.
What? Yeah. Try to set it up for the next month. Okay. Yeah, that particular committee depends on sometimes they don't meet. It depends on where we are with trustee business. Usually skip December because we can never make a December date work. Yeah. That's true. That's true. Okay. I think I'm caught back up again. Building and maintenance. Do you want to take that one, Scott?
Cheryl can can chime in with additional details. But we had and Erin mentioned the roof leak that we had with the rains. We're going to have to just continue to.
Benial.
Vigil. And the heating air conditioning system seems to be problematic with the heat that we're having. Multiple visits from Carrier. So I think that maintenance budget is likely to get used.
I have grave concerns that this is going to be an expensive affair.
Come on. You waiting on a part?
Oh, I'm waiting on a complete diagnosis.
So we haven't even got that far.
Help.
Thing.
Completely out in the building?
Not entirely.
It's not out. System is not working. It's just struggling.
This is a county owned building, and it's not the only county owned building that's showing its age and having problems. Sitting in on the county monthly meetings from Building Committee, there's a number of issues with county buildings, including the courthouse. Clock tower in the courthouse is literally rotting apart right now.
Oh, my gosh.
It's an historic structure. They they can't just go do something. They have to do it properly and get proper approvals.
Because it's destroying.
And they're looking at about $250,000 to $300,000 of repairs on that that are budgeted.
Precise. Yeah.
That's just one example. They continue to have thousands with hopeful bills. So we won't get any sympathy from the county as we're dealing with the issues here. But we just can need to continue to do what we.
You know, can.
And I and I want to mention something with that as well.
Plus.
Scott and I go to these meetings. And air conditioning systems, the buildings that that Scott mentioned, there's a number of them that are all aging out at the same rate that the library is at. And if there is a direct replacement, or if there is a replacement, and it's a new replacement, the system's going to be at least $500,000. It completely, it's a retrofit. The new air conditioning systems use a flammable fluid or flammable substance instead of the old freon. And because of that, there has to be venting. So there's got to be infrastructure changes. And like Scott said, we're not the only ones. And the list is longer than than you want to know.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's it's a it's a big deal.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Are we good? And that brings us to Fossil Report. And welcome, Sydney.
I don't know what I'm doing. So we're just going to wing it. We had our meeting last week where usually we would get our annual report, but unfortunately, our treasurer was not available. So I don't have those numbers to talk to you about. But I do have the bookstore and the membership numbers, and those are fun. So I will tell you about those. I'll summarize because I don't think you want the whole things. But between the end of last fiscal year and this one, we had over $10,500 in growth just for the bookstore alone. That does not count the memberships or donations. That is just everything that is run through the point of sale system inside the bookstore. So we went from $23,000 to $34,000. Our membership members, last year, at the end of the year, I had been trying for so long to reach 200. And we finally, for the first time, hit it. This year, my goal was like 250. And with the latest memberships that just came in at the last three events we did, I estimate we have 350 members.
Very.
We implemented a new fundraising platform back in February called Give Butter. That is where a lot of our online memberships now happen, which allow us to also do auto renewal. Just since February, that has brought in over $3,000 between memberships and donations all online. We had the open house. Our numbers were $1,800 at the open house for the merchandise sales donations, so on. We had our pop up pop event, which if you don't know about it, we filled this whole room. It was only supposed to be the back room, but it ended up being the entire room full of media stuff, books, CDs, DVDs, vinyl, all kinds of anything media related that you could think of. We didn't know if people would show up. It was the first time ever, had no idea. We ended up having over 100 people come in, over 60 people entered the door prize. We had raffles. That alone brought in, and this number is actually low because a few things came in after, brought in $2,200. The Royal Examiner sent Roger out here to do a nice write up on it. We got good press, a lot of things. People really loved it. Great turnout for that. Whitlow already told you that also I was working with him and Sue Lawrence about the Christmas in July festival. The kind of cool thing about that is I was involved because they knew that that my the button to push for me is say it'll go for fossil and you can get me to do about anything. So.
And she's right.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
That's that's my button. That's, that's my button. So they offered to have the proceeds from the tables go to Fossil. But the cool thing about that, um, is that a lot of people at the event did express the reason that they were excited about this, not just that it's a cool festival, but that they did love the library and that they made sure that they made this one because they wanted to take that moment to say, we love this. Um, they were incredibly supportive, they lo, they love us, um, and that was a really great thing to see, and it was great to have library and fossil out there, and it was a great time, even though it was incredibly hot, and yes, I was dressed like an elf, and that's the only time you're probably ever going to see that, so.
I've got pictures.
And there's a lot online, yes. Um, now, non-financial stuff, uh, we did add a new board member, uh, Charles from Main Street Geek is our new one. Chris ended his term as president, so I graduated to VP, Niokas are, or I graduated to president, Niokas VP, you probably already know that. Our newsletter goes out at the end of this month. Next year, or and then after that, we'll have probably one more outreach event in September before our annual book sale. Um, we came up with five strategic-style goals that we're going to work on this year that align with our mission to help Samuel's keep doing what it's doing. And overall this year, we look forward to growing and taking the next step into our friend journey, while still being the best friend you can count on, mostly because we'll be right here beside you, doing what we do.
Yay. You do it so well. Yeah, we, we can do so much more because of Fossil, so it's amazing.
Absolutely.
Absolutely amazing. And, and the community just steps up every time, you know, whether it's Fossil or the library, it's just, you know, the memberships for a direct response to what's going on and, and expressing their concern and just stepping up to the plate, so.
Earlier where you said that you guys had those dings coming in, I sat out after one of the Board of Supervisors meetings where I mentioned how many we had, I kind of put out it, challenged everybody. It was constant, just ding after ding, the same thing of people just wanting to join to have that moment to say, yes, I'm with you, so that is a really fun thing if you ever get to watch it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So whether people are responding to Fossil or they're responding to us, it's just really nice to be in partnership with you. So together we'll, we'll keep, we'll get there, so. Thank you, thanks for all you do. Um, unfortunately Cheryl's not feeling well, so we don't have a county update. Um, any old business that anybody has? Okay, well, new business, um, you have, in one of your handouts, you have a, um, evaluation for Erin. Um, so if you would, uh, fill that out and get it back to me by the end of the month, um, Scott and I will meet and then we'll schedule Erin's review in early August. But I need to hear from all of you, um, so that we have data and comments and other perspectives than, than just me and Scott, so. Um, just, that gives you a couple of weeks, two, three weeks maybe, um, so if you would fill out your evaluation, you're, of course, you're exact. Other than, you know.
Weird.
Um, anything you'd like to say, of course, welcome to say, but, uh, yeah, you, you have, are just getting to know Erin, so. Uh, but if you would fill that out and return it to me, then we'll, um, if you need it electronically, I can do that as well, but, um, I thought if I just handed it to you, maybe it would get done. Um, any other, any other business?
I do have a question.
Cool.
Is it time for another, when is it time again that we do another what's happening at the library open house kind of discussion?
Q and A.
Q and A.
Form. Um, I'm kind of waiting to see what happens tomorrow night.
Yeah, okay.
I know I just.
Keep you posted.
Yeah, um, depending what is said or isn't said, then we, we will have to schedule something.
Good. And we still plan on continuing that?
I, I, if you're on an agreement, I think that those are good things to have.
I think so, too.
It's a matter of when, and timing it right without.
Yep.
You know.
Cause the alarmers are.
Yeah, yeah, so, so far, things are kind of on hold and quiet. If, if the need arises, then we can schedule one pretty quick. The last time we scheduled, I think we, it was like three weeks, and we, we were able to get it in the, in the paper and get it advertised and scheduled, so.
But just in general, even just having it twice a year is a good op, you know.
I think.
It's a good opportunity for the people who aren't quite sure how the library works and how we do things, it's a great opportunity to get that out. People to know the trustees, get to meet them. Uh, a lot of the other libraries that I've met with were, loved the idea, so.
Yeah.
It's good practice at this point.
It helps, it helps to keep us, um, available for questions from the public, and I like that, so.
Well, I think it'd be a good opportunity to kind of like share the business, the new, our messages, our messages about the new business, you know, the business strategy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we developed about the sponsorships, stuff like that, new board members. An idea to do some new board members and stuff like that.
I'd be working on the agenda if you have things that you want to see happen at, at one of those, so that we're ready. Um, it's just a matter of timing, and I think we'll hopefully, hopefully we'll know more tomorrow about something, one way or the other.
Are we on the agenda?
Um, they're in a closed session, talking about the library, so. We, we may or may not hear anything, I don't know.
As of right now, there's nothing on the official agenda.
So the agenda right now is just a closed meeting.
Listen to me about the library.
And then have the regular meeting.
Okay, so there's a closed meeting at six. We're not on the regular agenda.
We're not on the regular agenda.
But they can add it or.
Unless it gets, unless it changes.
Talk about it in there as the supervisor's time.
Is the budget approved?
Budget's not approved, has to be approved before July first.
Was approved.
Was, was.
Okay.
It was approved before July first.
Okay.
So it stands, and if it's going to change, then that's what I, my research today was that it needs to be publicly changed.
And, and the last thing is, I think everybody's aware of the rant, but nothing has come of that.
No.
Right, so we're what? Jameson's set up three stipulations that he would like to see for us to get out of thing.
Us.
But nothing formal.
Not receive any communication, and not at all.
And we have. And we, and Erin has communicated.
There's, there was no motion, there was, so it was, it was just.
Ow.
And Erin communicated with the county and said, we're open.
We did that on July first.
The fourth meeting. Fourth meeting, and we've heard nothing other than.
So we don't have a July thirty-first deadline of anything.
No, there was nothing that came out of that meeting.
I have to bite genus.
Basically, on your research, he can't reprogram that money to anything other than library services.
Unless, unless he takes it to public hearing.
Unless, okay.
Yeah, that's how the, that's how the code reads.
Yeah.
So. If anybody wants to back, you know, go ahead and double-check me, I'm happy to have you do that, but that's how it, it reads to me, it's that.
For some reason, I had it, it, I had something in my head from some meeting last year that someone said if they don't provide library services.
So they're required to provide library services, right? Is that true?
No.
No, not, the Code of Virginia does not, does not require it, it just allows them to.
Okay.
I think a fundamental, um, issue on that point is that taxpayers have assumed a certain amount of their tax money will go to fund the library, and now all of a sudden it's not.
Because there's a historical precedent at this point.
Correct. And they, you know, they haven't had a voice in that. So can we ask for a bounty back?
Do that joke.
For tax money?
For somebody this afternoon who.
Intuit, according to.
Talk about the library and the donor emergency fund and the fundraising that we're doing. And his take on that was all of this fundraising, uh, doesn't let them off the hook.
That's correct.
What they've committed to in the budget to the citizens to fund the library.
That's correct.
And they, they made that statement clear in something, it's like, there was a statement, there was, be not one moment that.
He said, yeah, yeah, that's the mark, in the March fourth minute, so we're meeting. And not my, not.
Where library services are not funded.
Yeah, there wouldn't be one moment where they weren't funded.
That's their workaround, is that they've funded it, they just have it allocated, or dispersed.
Not been allocated.
Not allocated, yeah.
So funded. They got funded, but just stop by their.
Yeah, I almost, it's a move for us to use everything in the solo cup before.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Oh, totally.
Once that gone.
Yeah.
All right, well, we're, we can continue talking after, but I think at this point, we'll go ahead and adjourn. And, um, and I thank you all for coming and welcome again. Now, we're to our, um, our next meeting.